Thank you. Public planning board meeting of May 1st, 2018. I'll entertain a motion on the meeting minutes. Motion by John, seconded by Pat, to accept the meeting minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous at four. We have 181P. We'll do that next.
Hi, I'm Sherri Clancy from National Development. With me tonight is Bill Kennedy. He's our asset manager for this project. It's on Fortune Boulevard. It's Granite Park. To orient you, this is Target. And we come in our driveway and we have the Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, the TGIF Fridays, the Best Buy. And out here, we have a small 5,000 square foot building.
Oh, it used to be the mattress place.
It used to be the mattress place, exactly. So what we're trying to do tonight is, this has kind of always operated as its own little thing. It wasn't really integrated with the rest of the site. And we think there's more opportunity for us in re-tenanting to the building if we can put it on its own lot. So that's what we're here to do tonight. This was about an 18 acre parcel. So we're cutting off 80,000 square foot lot to just surround the 5,000 square foot former mattress building. And the resultant remaining land is still over 16 acres. So this new lot has over 290 feet of frontage. So it meets all the setbacks and side yards. And the remaining land is not in any way compromised from a zoning perspective by cutting this piece off.
Motion.
Motion by Pat to accept the plan. I just had one question. I'll take a second and then we can discuss. Seconded by Lena. All the easements that are needed are shown on the plan so that they would remain as, because I'm sure they're interconnected between the existing parcels so that each owner is going to need to have access.
Yeah, these easements are in existence already, yes.
Any other comments, concerns?
No.
Looks good.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Closed, unanimous at four. I also had a check for $250 was submitted with the 81Ps.
Okay, I get them too.
And Form A.
Passed 701, so I will open the continued public hearing for the application of Lobusser Building Corporation to amend the zoning bylaw relating to over 55 residential uses within the CA, Central Commercial, and CB neighborhood commercial zoning districts.
Good evening. For the record, Joseph Antonellis, on behalf of Kevin Lobusser, who was sitting with me. Hope you were all well tonight. When we were here a couple of weeks ago, we were asked to supplement our prior conversations and discussions with some additional information regarding parking. I think that the board had some concerns as to whether or not the proposed 1.75 spaces per residential unit would be adequate. We've done some research in the immediate area and provided you with a chart of some other projects in the area that have been both approved and are built. They're up and operated and occupied. And we picked four particular projects. Hopkinton Muse on Lumber Street in Hopkinton, which has 280 units and 483 parking spaces for a ratio of 1.72 per unit. None of these, by the way, are age restricted. They are all units that have no restrictions of any type. We have two apartment buildings in...
That's one.
That's a typo. One apartment building, I thought it was.
Yeah.
One apartment building in Milford on Medway Street, which has been in existence for quite some time. If I'm not mistaken, I think it was built in the late 60s. There are 24 units in that facility, and there are 40 parking spaces for a ratio of 1.67. We brought that to your attention because it's something local, something that's been in existence for a while, and something that I think if you'll check the records, has never resulted in any complaints regarding a lack of parking.
Where was that, Joe?
That is just before the Medway line on the right-hand side.
Okay, I know where it is.
It's been, again, I think it was...
Next to the Glass Company.
I know exactly where it is.
If I'm not mistaken.
I thought it was there, yeah, okay.
The late 60s or the mid 60s it was built. Then we chose the Westerly, which is a new development on West Central Street in Franklin. This is just over the Bellingham Line. If you're driving down south on 140 headed to Franklin to BJ's or something, you'll see the massive development that has been built on your right. Again, non-age restricted. That's a 40B, so you have a lot of three bedrooms in there. 454 spaces for 280 units for a ratio of 1.62 spaces per unit. And then we chose Ashland Woods, which is on Route 135, just over the Hopkinton line. I think there's a restaurant on the left called TJ's, I think it is, just down from there on the left side. It's a brand-new project, 60 units with 56 parking spaces for a ratio of less than one per unit. And I went in today and counted the spaces because I wasn't sure, but we've looked at the site plan, and that's in fact what was approved there. So we present this to you just as a supplement to our prior presentation to give you a little bit more information that we believe the parking calculations work. And again, in the proposed bylaw that we have suggested, we are suggesting over 55 age-restricted units, which the tendencies are is that there are less cars per family in those than there would be in the typical apartment that results with two commuters. So this is what we're here to present tonight. We didn't bring any prints or drawings tonight because we, again, are cognizant of the fact that we're not here to talk about a specific site, but rather the overall bylaw and how it might impact the town of Milford.
Questions, comments from the board?
Thank you. And to your point, although when you look at Ashland, you look at Franklin, those who have access to what I would consider public transportation, i.e. the T, although it's not immediate access, so I think these are somewhat bona fide to prove your point that 175 can work or does work, specific to what you're demonstrating. So I guess, in theory, you did what was asked of you. I'm not going to...
Correct.
...sit here and suggest that... I was fearful that you could have come back from something from Framingham or something that was right aside of the T, and I was going to like, Joe, come on, don't kill me. So I do appreciate that you did take some time.
I did contact the planner in Framingham to discuss it with her, but again, because the recent development in Framingham is downtown, and there is a specific protocol going on in Framingham to make it a residential downtown because of the train, I chose not to include...
And again, I'm appreciative to that.
And I would also point out that we checked on the project in Franklin that's on the Bellingham Line, and there is no bus that shuttled to the train station from there.
No.
And frankly, I would have thought there would be, but there wasn't, so we checked.
It probably will be in time.
Right. And there may be public transportation in Milford someday too. Maybe we'll have a train extended here. We don't know. But at any rate, we're comfortable with the presentation regarding the parking. I know that the board has its concerns, but we felt as though this supplement might help ease the board's decision as it relates to the parking.
And again, I appreciate that. The other thing I took notice of is that evidently you closed on the property, so you're the successful owner, so I should say congratulations.
Yeah, thanks.
But I guess I can also now appreciate why... I don't want to suggest that you're fast-tracking, but now that you own it, I can understand this bit of more of an urgency not to sit on something vacant and upkeep a building that you primarily can't do much with until you see what direction you're ultimately heading in. So I think that's noteworthy, so I can at least appreciate why your timeline has changed.
You'd also be very shocked at what the condition of the inside of the building looks like.
I'm not shocked, I know what it looks like.
Wow, it's unbelievable. Boiler rooms are completely flooded, ceilings are all ripped down. Somebody went in the gym, used the fire extinguishers all over. I mean, it's just like...
Oh my gosh.
It looks like a war zone already. I was shocked because...
Someone regrettably made the decision that they thought they'd help the building if they lowered the heat. The problem with that building is it's singular heat.
Yeah, it didn't help.
And I believe that you ended up losing pipes that burst.
Oh, yeah.
And I don't think that that was an intelligent choice, but nonetheless, it's your problem now, and I hate to be like that.
Yeah, no, I understand.
But that's really your problem now.
I think, for me, and again, since the last meeting, I went back and forth. I did a little of my own research. So again, I can suggest that the 1.75, at least I can understand where you came from, I guess, in theory. And to Joe's point that he pointed out last time, it's to your own detriment if you don't have enough parking. So, and I could also be mindful, and I want to point this out, obviously, we could take the approach to suggest that you have two, you know, two spots, but what that's effectively going to do is go eliminate all the green space, and there isn't any now. So I think when we look at residential, specifically to the downtown, I think the building would pop, and I think it would certainly look more residential if we could introduce some more green space, which again, just serving from memory, looking at your previous plans, I think it certainly shows green space that clearly isn't there. And let's be honest, in the CA, there wouldn't be any either. So I think, you know, that's a benefit, not only to the location, but, you know, when we talk residential, I think it's a little more homey and less city-like. That's just my two-cent opinion on that. I guess, in terms of the, specific to the CB, I guess when we look around at various properties, I went back and forth in my mind on this one, the 1.5 acre. Again, specific to CB, I guess there is a degree of merit to that. I think my only obstacle that I truly struggle with is the whole, you know, over 55. I consider and appreciate, and again, as I reflected back on some of the times that we took an opportunity to try to introduce this on town meeting, I know a lot, there was a lot of confusion that this was going to turn into, you know, overcrowding of units. So I can understand that in theory, if you're suggesting an over 55, you're basically suggesting that it's a very small profile of people that are going to qualify to be in there. And when you look at that and I look at some of the past, I guess, topics that were discussed at town meeting, I can appreciate where you're trying to come with. I just look at this, and I don't know if I'm there mentally. I don't think you're wrong. I just don't know if I can get to the over 55. I think the rest of it, I can probably, in theory, live with, specifically now that you own the property. And again, I can appreciate why you're on a different path than you were probably arguably two months ago. So that's my view. I just, I don't know if I can do the over 55. I think I would have preferred, as a method, that it was an allowable use but didn't, you know, that it wasn't a guaranteed use. I think if the language was written in a different terminology, I might be able to accept it, but the way it's written, I don't know if that can be tweaked. That's just my two cents, so. My point on that would be that removing the over 55 component does not affect, and again, I don't want to be particular to this building or this developer, does not affect what Mr. Lobusser wants to do, because an over 55 option is available under federal housing law. And he could choose, notwithstanding the bylaw, which, by the way, can't prohibit over 55 because of the anti-discrimination statute by the federal government, he could simply choose to go over 55. If he made that choice with the federal statute, then he is only required to have 80% of the units be over 55, and that's hard and fast language in the federal statute. So when we chose this avenue, we chose it because, again, we thought it was more tax-positive to the town and the best way to usher in residential living on Main Street.
And Joe, forgive me, it's tax-positive because now it's under private ownership that it's never been under. So right off the bat, it's tax-positive?
I recognize that, but...
And I'm not going to split here with you, but again, I can appreciate your stance on it, and I will reiterate one more time. Our exposure, over 55 developments in terms of PRD, has not been overly successful. They've come back with changes and modifications. So again, perhaps I am a little gun-shy because of PAX practices. Maybe that's what it is. I'm not suggesting it's a bad concept. I just don't know if I can get there, is all I'm saying.
You know, Pat, and I certainly don't want to start getting into the PRD bylaw, but, you know, I thought about that, because I know that came up, and I mean, I was away school vacation, I apologize for that, but, you know, one of the things that I see that's different in Milford than a lot of towns that I develop in is, in your PRD, you guys give a bonus density when you go 55 and over, which, in a small town like Milford, you really, you know, you have a mixed, it's a mixed project. And mixed projects, for whatever reason, when you get this far west out of the city, just don't seem to work as well as, maybe in theory, they seem like they would work. You know, I think a couple of meetings ago, I was here in front of the board, and, you know, I'm not afraid of 55 and over, because really, at any point in time, I have a 55 and over project going in some town, and I've had that for years. But they're never mixed projects. They're always, it's a designated 55 and over type of a community, and we've had great success, like I said. And we've never, we've never had an issue selling units or, you know, we've never gone back to a planning board and said that it didn't work for us, or, and we have to try to change it. So maybe we just, you know, you probably come from different worlds with that, because I see, I'm out in a lot of different towns, and you guys are...
I like it, but you know I'm selfish. You know I'm selfish. But to your, also to your point, let's be honest, your net investment in the building, irrespective of it's over 55 or not, your net's still the same. You still have to build units that are going to be exercised and executed. So it really doesn't matter, in theory, whether you're renting to, you know, young noodley weds or someone that's in their 70s. To you, it doesn't matter, because you're, like I said, the units are going to be the units, the amenities are going to be the amenities, and your cost is going to be the cost regardless. So I can, I can understand that, I just...
Well, I do think that, obviously, that's very true. I'm not going to build a different building if that happens. There's no question about that. But I'm not sure if Joe had mentioned this at the last meeting, but, you know, my perspective on the whole project was that I'm trying to use my head, and I'm trying to make it as a stepping stone project to try to introduce more residential units to downtown. You know, I've lived in Milford my whole life, so I've watched what's happened with, you know, a lot of different attempts to get it done. And, you know, so I guess in my mind, I'm trying to shrink the issues down, introduce it. It's a starting point. Let's get on, you know, let's make it the first base and start trying to do something instead of trying to, you know, be the solution for every single issue in town. And, you know, I guess where you draw that line is, you guys will have to decide, but, you know, you can see where I try to draw the line.
We don't ultimately decide. Town meeting will ultimately decide.
No, I understand that. I understand that.
Pat, how old are you?
Fifty. My problem is, is I got another five before I can get in there. That's my problem.
I just have one question, and I'm not sure of it, but the parking spot that's across the street, which is the basketball net?
Yes.
Is that part of your ownership? The town owns that, isn't that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
I just wanted to, I was looking at that as extra parking, but I wasn't sure if the town, the town does own it.
I guess I just, I still have concerns, comments. I can look at this, but I'm not totally comfortable with the parking. I'm not comfortable with the 1.75. I'm probably more, as I thought about it over the past couple of weeks, you know, and, you know, I'm sure I can find some that show more than two in other places. And so I'm not, I'm not sure how much this helps me or hurts me. But the one thing that I was, that I'm, that I'm really concerned about the way it is, and I personally don't like it, and there's probably nothing that we can do about that, just the way that I'm going to feel, is that effectively, I believe this changes the context of the downtown, and it wasn't a way that I wanted to go. I wanted to go to a mixed use. Effectively, by this bylaw, we could end up with residential throughout downtown with no commercial impact whatsoever. That's, that would be an allowed use based on this bylaw. There's no commercial requirement at all. You could change to residential throughout, and I have, I have grave issues with that. That isn't the way that I wanted to go. I mean, my intent was to do this as a mixed use.
I don't mean to interrupt, but I'd like just to make a clarification point. The RB zone and the RA zone are treated differently. The RA zone requires that the residences would be on the second and third floors.
CA.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. I apologize. I've got, I'm looking at the wrong zoning bylaw today. The CA requires so that we believed that there was the inherent fact that there would be retail in what I consider to be the central part of Milford, as opposed to the two things leading out. And I think that Babe kind of made that comment about separating the CA before, and again, I just want to point out that we're, one, Mr. Caligione, we're not prohibiting it in the CB, in the B district, and in the CA, it is in fact an inherent part of it. Okay? But you're right, this building falls outside of that, and as I said to you that night...
Like I said, I just have that.
And I said to you that night, we do not plan, to be open and honest, we said, we did not plan for any mixed use in that building. That's good.
No, I know. And obviously, and the thing that I see is probably, based on the acreage and stuff, that that would be the area that gets changed with some minor lot configurations, that people could do that, and that wasn't, that wasn't what I envisioned. And again, that's a philosophical thing that I think everybody has to go through. Everybody needs to make their own decision. Town meeting may be fine with it. I just don't know that I can get over that.
Understood.
So those are, those were my major issues with it. You know, and based on that, I have a tough time voting for it. And as I've said all along, I'm not saying that this thing is necessarily right or wrong. There's just some issues that, based on the timeframe that I needed, I have a tough time trying to do that without, without me getting additional information and looking at stuff and just trying to work through stuff that I just don't think I'm comfortable doing at this point.
Any other questions, comments from the board?
Well, you know, I just want to give Mr. Lobusser a pat on the back, because I really think that that area really could be beefed up. And I can look at that as a place where someone that's over 55, you know, renting right to that area. I mean, I think it will improve the area. I think that what you're doing is excellent. I have no problem with that.
Walking distance to all of the shopping...
It's in walking distance. It's, you know, it's on the outskirts of the downtown, as Joe had said, that the downtown area to me is 89 and up, so I don't have a problem with it. I just have a problem with the over 55, because I think if somebody that wants to rent it, the expenses, I think it's going to be expensive. But that's, that's how I feel, but...
Joe, unless I, and I could have dreamt it, I thought there was something in here that suggested if the building had existing retail, it had to maintain existing retail. And I'm not picking it up, so.
I could have, I could have...
The CA zone.
Oh, yes. It's in the CA. CA, yeah. CA, Pat, yes.
The CA zone would be above the first floor.
Of the first floor. Okay, okay. Which means there would be...
I remember reading, I just couldn't...
Mixed use in a building, in any building. So even if someone were to do a new project and take something down, then the first floor would be retail, office, whatever.
Okay.
And upstairs would be second, would be residential, correct.
Yeah, CA.
CA. And we excluded it in the B district, because again, the B district is more predominated coming in by residential uses along the way. And I understand what Mr. Caligione's saying, that maybe there would be nice to have a blend in that, but at the same time, nothing prohibits that in the CB district. I just, again, want to make the point that we tried to not prohibit it just to add.
Well, there's a grocery store at the mall now, just to tell you the way things are.
I know. Okay.
Any motion?
Again, my only point is just the over 55. I don't know, again, I'm somewhat satisfied to a degree that the parking proves his point. I'm also mindful that if he doesn't have enough parking, he's not going to be able to rent out units, which is to his, you know, ultimate detriment. So I just, the over 55, I don't know. Again, past practice, there was some pushback relative to what people perceived as overcrowding of units. So I can appreciate where you're coming from, I just, I just, I don't know if I can get there. I mean, that's my only real hangup, is just that, you know, and again, I appreciate your whole federal... And again, I don't want to hold up just for one aspect.
I understand.
And I do appreciate that I'm very, very hopeful that you're able to do something that we have yet to be successful at doing, because again, I think all of us, conceptually, want residential as an opportunity for this CACB district, so that's my only struggle.
And again, I don't want to be specific to Kevin's building. We just believe coming in, that with the perceptions from the past, that by offering the over 55 as the lead-in for the beginning of redevelopment along these, along Main Street, that it was the proper lead-in, because it'll give people an opportunity to see what happens without the potential for the overcrowding that I think some people suggest might happen.
And I can't argue that point, Joe, because I was there twice. I cannot argue that point with you.
And I champion the fact that this board has tried it in the past, and I'm a strong believer that Main Street in Milford needs to be revitalized and...
Joe, and to that point, I definitely think it's time for change. I think the complexity of downtown isn't what it used to be. I clearly would like to see different, I think to have residential is going to allow other businesses to come in that haven't been able to successfully survive here in the last 20 years. So clearly, with that, again, I guess to that, I'll put my differences aside and tell you that I'll make a...
Oh, it's a public hearing, so I have to close the public hearing. I'll close the public hearing and...
Actually, I should open it up. Is there anybody in the public that wants to comment? Hearing none now, entertain a motion.
My apologies. I'll make a motion to close the public hearing and pass a favorable to town meeting.
Motion made to close the public hearing and send a favorable to town meeting. Can I hear a second? Seconded by John. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Three in favor, one opposed.
We thank you for your patience and your cooperation in inviting us back.
I was opposed, by the way.
Best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Hopefully, we'll be back.
Yes, for a special permit.
For a special permit, yes.
Yep. Good night.
With that, we'll go to the second continued public hearing, which is the application of Grayson Building LLC for approval of Labrador Estates definitive plan, four-lot subdivision located on 11-acre parcel off of Central Street. Assesses map 54 block zero lot five, the C-zone.
This is yours.
Hello. Dan Hazen with Gary &amp; Helen, on behalf of Grayson LLC. Since the last meeting, we had a tree hearing. The trees along the front. It was advertised two weeks. This abbotter showed up. He had no concerns. No one else showed up. He actually is going to be petitioning the town to remove the trees in front of his house. I guess they were heavily damaged over the past couple of years between the drought and some gypsy moths. We've made revisions, and I've given those to DPW Highway to include granite curbing through here. We offset the sidewalk so that there's a grass strip now. We did soil testing within detention basin. We did find ledge pretty high up. We are proposing that the detention basin only be used for attenuation of the storms, for the two, the 10, the 25, and the 100-year storm, and also for TSS, total suspended solids removal. We're going to be achieving infiltration through the individual lots, offset from the septics, using cultech chambers so that the roof downspouts will go into these chambers and then percolate into the ground. We'll do soil testing, individual soil testing to find adequate, you know, good areas where we can get good soil and two-foot separation of groundwater. There were a few other minor revisions that we had added, such as stamps and datums. We did do an erosion control plan that addresses staging, stockpile areas, a few other things, minor. I did drop off this afternoon, I apologize for the late delivery of a profile, site distance, stocking site distance, down, looking westward, or looking eastward, coming up Central Street. Have you got a chance to look at this mic, by the way?
I have not looked at that in detail yet.
How many trees have to be removed to get your site distance?
I don't remember how many were advertised for. I think there were about 12 that were of a diameter large enough to be advertised.
Looks like there's four or five in the neighbor's property, as far as that goes. The others are in the entrance to his access way.
Right, these are, there's one in front of the retaining wall, and then there's, yeah, three or four in front of his property, and the rest are, you know, the front of, basically the entire front of the access is going to be cleared along with everything that comes down and in.
Does Chuck Reno have a bylaw? You take one, you plant one, or no?
Used to.
I don't know if he does.
I don't know if he does, they might-
I'm not sure what their requirements are anymore.
Is there a strict requirement within the subdivision?
If you're building new homes, it's usually-
There has to be so many in the front of the house, I believe.
I know a lot of cities have, I just don't know.
It's not, it, it, they can be in the, in the front, I believe in the front lot. They don't, they're not in the right way, correct, Larry? They were actually in the property?
Oh, yeah. I was looking for it.
Six hundred feet before the intersection.
So there is, there is, but that, that's just straight, I don't believe that it's a takedown. I'm not sure what he has in terms of takedown, put one back up. During the meeting, he did mention if he does take one down, he can put two back, certainly, I can't remember if he said twenty feet or twenty-five feet within the property, but, I mean.
Those would be for the ones on, yeah.
Yeah, if, if he wound up taking these down for someone else, not for, not for this project, for, uh, for the benefit of other people.
Mike, I noticed you had a letter going through with, uh, and they had comments, the Jew-
Yes, I have reviewed, I have reviewed, I have reviewed that, um, and Dan basically just went through most of those, so I'm okay. Ninety-eight percent's I'm okay with. I just have to get my head around how they're gonna attenuate the recharge and from the soil test and with the high ledge that he had just mentioned, but I also have to review it for conservation, so before then, I'll, I'll have that figured out.
Yeah, I was, I was wondering about that to a certain extent, is, uh, that, you haven't done testing for a septic system yet?
We have.
You have, so you do know where the septic systems are going?
We're proposing, yeah, we're roughly in this area here and here.
Okay. So it's just, it's just the, uh, uh, attenuation for the, uh, for the roof leaders and stuff that you don't know where you're gonna be putting that in?
Right, and these aren't, they're not very large systems, you know, it's, uh, they're fairly small.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure, uh, did, uh, seeing how we've had, uh, there's been various things floating around the town of Milford, the status of water on this one. Seeing how we were supposedly running water down from Central Street, but has the water company, what was the water company's statement in this one, in terms of their ability to supply water? Seeing how the last thing I heard is the water company can't supply water to anybody.
Well, that's what I heard.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I'm, you know, again, we keep, we, we keep going through this with, with some of their letters and stuff, and I know we have the extension of the water line from Eva Street down to, to pick up on this one, but if the water company can't supply water, then we, uh,
Yeah, we don't do it.
Yeah, well, I just wanna see where the hell we are. What, what was in the letter?
I haven't heard, um, not, I'm not aware of.
Do you remember what was in there? Did, did you get an original letter from the water company indicating? 'Cause I, it's not in the package, so I'm not, I don't remember off the top of my head what it said, and-
I'm pretty sure it had that standard language about not providing at this time, et cetera, et cetera, I can't, not verbatim, but that standard note that they have been putting in as of recent, I think that's in there. I don't have it in front of me, but.
I'm going through the file.
Did they send a letter to us?
I'm pretty sure I remember seeing one. I just don't remember if it said, if it said they can't supply the water or not, that's the only thing, 'cause I mean, if that's the case, we really don't have either that or somebody's gonna have to go doing testings for wells.
I don't know if we got an updated, uh, letter from them.
No, we didn't get a letter in the definitive set, uh, let me go back and look at the preliminary. Has to come back anyway.
Site distance seems adequate, or you haven't reviewed that yet?
Mike hasn't, uh, Mike didn't have a chance to review, this just came in, it was two twenty-five.
There is, last time we asked him for a letter, well, my letter asked for another letter from a traffic consultant, and I, they have submitted that. It doesn't really state that they were out, they were out on site, but I meant, I had a discussion with Dan, and he said that they were, have been out on site, which was basically, that's what I was asking him to do. And then that additional information should substantiate how it's gonna work, but I haven't had a chance to review that yet.
Once the trees are cut, and, I mean, we, this banking along the edge here does have to get trimmed back, I mean, that's, and then-
Is the solid line, the solid line underneath this is, is the proposed grade, is that what I'm to take this to be?
Correct, that's just where it's gonna be.
Okay. Any, uh, questions from the board? Anything else, Pat?
No, I'm just curious about the-
Well, I, I think he's gonna have to come back and audit it.
I think the biggest, the biggest, not with sand in the water, I think the biggest obstacle, obviously, is the line of sight. Uh, just 'cause of the orientation of how that road's to be laid out and just the way it sits now, again, with the trees, I, I just, this is not, uh, you know, even though it's only four houses, you certainly don't want to flood them into a road that, and I travel that every morning.
Yeah, there's, there's cars on it.
Oh, there's a ton of cars on it, so, and, and it, there's a lot of blind spots. And in the wintertime, it's even worse.
It's awful.
Yep, so. Yeah, I guess, unless there's someone here from the audience that asks questions, I think that probably needs to be remanded to the next meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, in terms of direction to, to the applicant, I, you know, I think we just want Mike to have a chance to go through this.
Absolutely.
And make sure that, that, you know, he can effectively give us a clean letter, and then the one thing that, that I think we all need to do is, is to go back and circle around back to the water company and find out exactly what their current standing is, so that we know.
I don't think they ever respond, as I-
Yeah, well, we need, especially, yeah, especially being in this situation right now, where we've heard stuff that, that, that I believe they're, they're, yeah, contradicting what they said originally, or didn't, weren't that forceful that they couldn't supply water, and now the statement is, they can't supply the water, we need to figure out exactly where they are before we can start approving our plan, so that would be the direction, at least, that, that I have in terms of you coming back, is, is we need to trade out the water and then have, give Mike a chance to go through this stuff. I don't have any other comments or concerns if those things all work out.
No, I can't see the plan. Mike, how many fire, what the chief want, one in the begin, one in Central, one in the development, do you recall?
I don't recall off the top of my head what the, what the fire department-
I thought it was one on Central, one is, one here and one there.
Yeah, one here and one at the end.
Yeah, that, I, I just wanted to verify, I thought that was his desire.
I wasn't sure.
And I'm only asking, 'cause I can't remember. You're taking it from, uh, the corner there. Yeah, and I didn't know if he was gonna have one put on the corner of-
There's one at the corner of Mason and Beaver.
Yeah, I didn't know if he was gonna bring one on the opposite side, where you come down.
There's one showing here.
That's it, okay.
Wait a minute. There's one there.
So he, he is showing two, he is showing one, two on Central Street.
This drawing is correct, you've got one on Central Street, 'cause on, on the drawings you showed here, you had, you ended up leaving the water line on.
I was gonna say, 'cause I thought there was more than one on Central Street, I just couldn't remember. But if it's captured right there, then it's definitely there. Like, I assume because of the distance, he was gonna break it.
Okay. Now, just as a question, just for my own clarification, so like, when I go back to the applicant. If the water company does not, cannot supply water, can the planning board approve the plan, but then will he just have to wait until there's water, or will the planning board not approve the plan based upon the fact that there is no water? Or how does that work?
Can you approve a plan without water?
I mean, there's always the option.
Not on the subdivision control lot, you need water.
I think so.
Yeah. I can't find it in either the preliminary or the final, in the file, has the letter.
Yeah, I'll find it out.
I don't have my-
Did you wanna talk on this, on this particular item, or were you here for something else?
No, I have an idea for this.
Okay. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, I just wanna know if they're gonna take the trees down, that's all, I mean, and the wall, that's what I'm thinking.
You're the, you're the owner to the, effectively to the west of-
Yeah, I'm at that three ninety-seven, right in front of mine, that's my tree, I mean, the trees in front of my house.
What's your name?
Gonzales.
Jose.
Jose?
Yes.
Um, we have no intention of touching the wall.
That was you, you told me last time, but now I see the trees, the tree removals, that's right.
Right, um.
I believe the trees, the trees are, are, are in the town's property, is my understanding, correct? So the trees, the trees are in the town's property, the town is going to, the town is allowing the applicant to take down those trees. As, and, as he spoke about, there was a, the tree warden held a, held a public hearing in order to do that. So the town is going to allow him to take down the trees that are in the public property. They, they don't have the right, nor do they need to take down any trees that are in your property.
If you would like additional trees, the town can put trees back. Like I said, he can give you two trees for the one, so.
But they're still taking the tree, they're still taking trees down in front of his property, just not on his property.
Right.
Correct.
The applicant will take them down as part of this process, yes.
But the wall's gonna stay, right?
The plan is to cut the trees and grind the stump.
Yeah, we just let that-
So the, the stump won't actually be pulled out, so the roof, you know, the, the, the earth won't be disturbed, but the stump will be ground down below the surface and then backfilled and a moment to see it.
The wall's gonna stay.
Okay.
I just wanna, yeah, that's fine, you have, if they're gonna take them down, that's fine.
Thank you, sir.
entertain a motion to continue.
Motion.
Motion by Pat to continue the public hearing to May fifteenth at seven oh one. Well, hear a second. Seconded by John. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous of four. So those, those are the two issues that we have, and we need to figure out where the water company is with that. I mean, other, other than that, then you, I, I believe, Mike, as part of that, they would have to do testing to shoot, to show that they have water available for wells, is the other option. There is, there is no requirement that they have to have, they have to have Milford Water Company water. We can't approve a subdivision without Milford Water Company water, but I believe they have to show-
Have to show water.
They have to show water.
Yeah, I'd have to look up that, the verbiage. It may say public water, or, or-
Why don't we, I mean, the water company doesn't run, doesn't have lines all the way through town, so there, there are subdivisions, there are locations that, that there haven't been water, so.
An eighty-one P or something?
That wouldn't qualify as an eighty-one P.
Doesn't fall, doesn't, doesn't fall in the eighty-one P, yeah. This doesn't, and eighty-one Ps don't fall into subdivision control law, so they're different.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, ZBA.
ZBA variance referral, fourteen Temple Street, Daniel Onision. Let me see what I have in my packet here. I'll read Larry's letter into the record. The applicant requests a variance to allow for the construction of an addition to an existing single-family dwelling on the subject property. Specifically, the request is for variance from the front yard setback requirements to allow for the construction of a twenty-four by twenty-four two-story addition to the existing single-family dwelling. Be seventeen point nine from the front Fairbank Street property line, thirty feet required. Existing two-story, single-family dwelling is conforming as to setbacks and already has one attached garage at the first floor level. There is adequate room to build an eleven point eight-foot wide two-story addition without a variance. This would result in a two-car garage on the main level. There appears to be no conditions whatsoever relating to land itself or to the surroundings that can constitute a hardship. In addition, the other houses along both street frontages meet the front setback requirements. Therefore, I recommend the planning board forward an unfavorable to the zoning board of appeals due to a, a lack of hardship.
This is the classic corner lot syndrome.
Yeah. Well, except that it's, look at the last two sheets in the packet. One of the houses are, are approaching on frontage either way, setbacks.
And technically, if he didn't live on a corner lot, he wouldn't either. My old stomping grounds. Walter Tallamini used to live there. I used to deliver the paper when I was a kid.
But look at the building.
Just saying.
Look at the picture.
No, I know.
He can, if he wants a two-car garage, you need, he can add one.
Here's my opinion. I guarantee you, he's enclosing that garage, putting a two-car garage is probably what he's doing.
Well.
Again, to me, it's a classic sign, it's, it's a classic corner lot, let's, you know, it should be fifteen feet, it shouldn't be the same thirty, because he lives on a corner lot. That's just my two-sun opinion. My old neighborhood, Walter Tallamini used to live there.
All right.
Just saying. Delivered the paper for years. Well, I'm just giving my two-sun opinion. My opinion is I'm gonna pass on a favorable, but I, I, I'm just, that's my two-sun opinion.
Motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion for favorable.
Motion to pass a favorable recommendation to the ZBA. Hear a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Lena. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Bradbury lived there.
Three in favor, I know, I know.
He put on a couple of additions, and his house will look very similar to that one.
Two in favor, two in favor, two opposed.
Split vote.
John and I were against.
But again, Bradbury's house will look very, looks very similar to this one.
Get my haircut then?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Just saying. Last, I have to be reminiscent of the old neighborhood. I sound like you, Lena, now.
I know it.
Last item on the agenda is ZBA special permit referral, twenty-six Franklin Street, Guaranteed Builders, Inc. Applicant requests a special permit to reconstruct a single-family dwelling on the subject property. The home was damaged by fire. The existing lot is non-conforming due to area, and the dwelling is non-conforming due to setbacks. Section three point one point two of the zoning bylaw provides for the restoration of non-conforming dwellings damaged by fire to the extent of more than seventy-five percent of its replacement value. The new dwelling is to be located substantially within the same print, same footprint as the existing house. Also, the detached barn to the rear of the property is to be raised. I recommend a favorable to the zoning board of appeals.
Motion for favorable.
Second.
Motion by Pat to send a favorable to the zoning board of appeals, seconded by John. Any further discussion? Again, this one here is pretty much in the same location. No further discussion.
You can't victimize them, because they, they suffered a loss because of fire.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous of four. entertain a motion to close the meeting? Motion by Pat to close the meeting, seconded by John. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous of four. Thank you very much.